I am the owner and broker of Digs, where we like to connect cool people with cool homes in Glendale, La Cañada, Lacrosse, and the communities around. I want to thank everybody for coming to our Dig Town Hall, where we try to fill in the knowledge gaps. Because in a COVID world, everything has changed. And so for those of you who were actively planning to buy or sell before COVID, you're probably hoping to buy or sell now, and you have some questions. And then there are some of you who are wondering, is there going to be an opportunity for me now that everything has changed? So we're doing this on Zoom. We are also on Facebook Live, on the Digs page, and we're also on Instagram Live. For those of you on Instagram, I'm not looking at you. I'm actually looking at my guests on Zoom. I'm not ignoring you. I promise. But if you have questions, I can see them and I can ask our guests. Speaking of guests, I would like to introduce to you our two experts that are on this edition of our Town Hall. First up is Oscar Way. Oscar Way is a senior economist for the California Association of Realtors. Now, yes, he is part of an association who is part of the real estate industry. On the other hand, I have been following C A R for my entire 34-year career. And what I've discovered is they don't necessarily just happy-talk-smoke-up-your-ass. They actually give us real information. And when things are not doing well, I've noticed that they have the chutzpah to actually say when things are not going well. On the other hand, they will also give you what they think is coming down the road that helps you make good strategic decisions with what you might want to do with your residential real estate. So welcome, Oscar. We're really excited to have you. He has been at each one of our Town Hall meetings, and his insight has been invaluable. Our other guest today is Shay Case. Shay and I have known each other. Well, we're getting old enough that we can't say how long we've known each other because it's embarrassing, right?
Yeah, we'd just better not say it all.
It's better not say it all. Let's just say that when we first started hanging out together, neither one of us had gray hair. And now...
That's right. A little bit.
Anyway, yeah, let's just not even talk about that. Shay Case is someone who has been involved in the industry about as long as I have, has seen it all. We've both been through, I think this is our fourth economic cycle, isn't it? It is.
I'd say at least the third.
At least our third. I think we're well into our fourth. And Shay is going to give us a really quick update on what's going on in the mortgage world with interest rates and what he sees as difficulties or lack thereof for getting loans and mortgages if you want to buy or refi. So what I'd like to do is kind of go with the easy one real quick. Shay, can you give us an update on what's going on in the mortgage world?
Sure. Right out of the gate, I'll tell you, I think it's a great time to buy. It's a great time to seek mortgage financing. We have record lows in terms of interest rates. I feel like I'm a broker, broken record because we keep seeing these record lows. They come down, they come down further and further, from five to four to three to the high twos. So interest rates are amazingly low. Thirty-year fixed, around 3%. Yeah, I mean, it's just the money is so cheap. It's a great time to buy. I think we might have thought we'd see a dip in the market with the whole economic crisis. I don't know that we can say that. Certainly not in our marketplaces. The demand is outweighing the supply, and I'll let you guys talk about that. But great time to buy because I don't think we want to wait. There's nothing to wait for in terms of any collapse or, you know, in my mind, I think it's a great time to buy. And it's, financing is still very easily gotten. And you talk about what are the challenges? Well, the only challenge might be for the folks that are self-employed and whose business was impacted by the stay-at-home order on March 19th. If you haven't worked since then, then it's going to be tough to get financing because we need you to be working. Your current income in 2020 is relevant. And so if you can get back to work, the underwriting community understands that businesses were shut down for a while, whether it's the entertainment business or other industries. And so we understand that there was a hiatus or a lull. But if you're back to work, working again, making money again, then you're a good candidate to get financing. So rates below...
Even if your income is significantly down from what it was last year?
You know, it's kind of a judgment call, but we, you know, we use our common sense approach. If you're back to work currently, we're not going to hold you to a year-to-date average of maybe prior years.
Okay.
So if you've worked since the shutdown, that's a positive thing in the eyes of the lending industry. And it's better if you, even if you took some time off from work, if you're back to work earning a paycheck as we speak, that's better than working for the first part of the year and not working for the last three months.
So they're not necessarily going to stick to the old model where they would just do a straight average over the last two years. They're going to understand...
They're going to take that average of the last two years and then with an eye on 2020, again, we're not going to expect everybody to be at their normal earnings pace through June 15th or so, or June 25th now. But if you're, if you're working again or can show, again, I have a lot of folks in the entertainment business. So if they've got projects up and coming, and it hasn't been too long since they've worked last, again, it's a judgment call. But we want to make loans to these folks. And if we feel like they're gainfully employed again, then we feel comfortable doing those loans for the most part.
Okay, so it sounds like mortgages are still cheap. Are they, are mortgage rates, are they lower than they were the last time you and I met?
Yes.
Seems like it, right?
Yes, yes.
Doesn't seem like they could go any lower.
Yeah, and I gotta stop saying that. But it really feels like they can't. But when you're getting mortgages, mortgages in the twos,
Right.
That's, it's very attractive.
Very attractive, right? Okay, so I bet your refi business is blowing up.
And to that point, we, the mortgage volume for both purchases, pre-approvals, people still out shopping for homes, and refinances. Yes, I'm very busy at the moment, so that's a good thing. And again, it's great for anybody looking for home financing or looking to buy.
Anything that we need to build into our process because of this huge volume of applications that you're getting?
Well, you're talking specific to purchases, and we do prioritize a purchase transaction over a refinance. I'm locking my refinances for, say, 45 days, sometimes 60 days. Certainly, we're going to put a priority on a purchase to make sure we can still close in 30 days.
Okay.
But I think it's wise to be reasonable and use our common sense in knowing that appraisers are busy, escrow companies are busy, title companies are busy, lenders are busy. So we may not hit all of our milestones as quickly as we would like or as we did in the past, but we're sure going to try.
Excellent. I think now more than ever, the quality of the team that backs you up in the purchase is critical. There's so much chaos. There's so much stuff swirling around, and there's so much volume of action, if not, if not straight-up business. There's so much volume of action that if your team doesn't know what the heck they're doing, you're going to get shuffled to the bottom of the deck because they just don't know any better. Yeah?
No, we take accountability for our loans, and we also want to always be responsive to our clients, our business partners such as yourself, so that we don't go dark on you and you don't know where the heck we are. We don't go off the radar. So times are tough, but we're digging in and we're up for the challenge.
Plus, I can walk to your office and mess you up if I'm not happy, so.
Yes, you can.
I could. It's down the block, right? Oscar's laughing, going, "Oh, my gosh, she's so mean. She doesn't know where I live." Awesome. Is there anything that I should have asked you that I didn't ask?
No, I think I am painting a pretty rosy picture. We don't have all of our more aggressive underwriting tools in our belt yet, but we're, we're working that way. But for the most part, our core lending is very, as I say, very gettable, very obtainable.
Okay, awesome, awesome. Shay, okay, so just to let you guys know on Instagram, because several people have joined in just the last couple of seconds, I am having, hosting this meeting on Zoom and Facebook Live. But you are able to listen in. If you have any questions at the Dig Town Hall, just let me know. Type it in, and I'll make sure your questions get answered. Same thing on Facebook Live. So Shay, thank you so much. That was super useful. So Mr. Oscar, senior economist for the California Association of Realtors. I'll bet you guys have been really busy keeping the Realtor members calm and informed as to what's going on in the marketplace. So catch me up.
Yes, we've been trying. Thank you, first of all, Gendo, for inviting me again. Yes, so we have been trying, you know, to keep our members informed, and we have been putting together a lot of information. And, you know, that's what I'm here for, you know, to share some of the information with you guys. And of course, yeah, with that much information, I need some tool. So I'm going to share my PowerPoint slides. And I'm going to speak fast and hopefully make sense. But let's, let me show you some slide first.
Okay, great. And if anybody on Instagram Live wants to see these slides, just drop me a comment down below, and I'll make sure that you get a copy of them.
And Gendo, I need you to give me permission to share a screen first.
Yes, that's right. If you have sharing options, and we will let you share. You should be able to share now, I think.
Let me try, yes. Here we go.
Okay.
So let's get started. I am going, I have, I do have quite a bit of slide, but I'm going to speak fast and try my best. So we do have a lot of things to cover. As Shay said, you know, you know, interest rates have been really, really low. And actually, as you're going to see some market activities in some of the slides that I'm going to show mainly on the pending sales. But before we do that, you know, because I'm an economist, I always talk about, you know, some of the economic update first. But economic updates have to kind of put aside first before we talk about, you know, a coronavirus update because it does have an impact on the economy. So, you know, I got some, you know, statistics from, you know, the State of California from the government website. And it shows that, yes, we have been trying. We have been trying to, you know, do our social distancing, but we did have a California reopen in a couple of weeks ago, or three, four weeks ago. And people seem to have relaxed a little bit. And as such, in the last few days or last couple of weeks, we have seen some spikes in new cases. I want to bring this up because this is very important to be aware of, that we do have a spike. We have to continue to keep ourselves, to keep the social distancing measure in our mind to make sure that we're keeping things in place. Now, take a look at these cases. New cases spiked the last week, two weeks or so in California. But not only in California, but for the U.S. and some of the other states. Of course, many people will say, "Oh, well, it has something to do with more testings." Well, that's very true. We do have more testings, and it does increase, you know, the number of cases. But positivity rate also has increased, which is not in the slide. But positivity rate increase means we have more people catching, you know, the coronavirus. Now, in the last few days, I think I heard, you know, from government, Knowlesum said something yesterday or today saying that in the last two weeks or so, we have had increased, you know, new cases by 56,000, which is about 25% of all cases. And in the last couple of days, you know, like yesterday, we have 5,000 cases, and the day before, we have 7,000 cases. So that's a significant increase. So, you know, people still may not, you know, be convinced and said, you know, "Oh, it's all because of the availability of testings. We have more people being tested." But if you take a look at how many people get hospitalized, that may not have anything to do with, or that doesn't hinge on the testings. Number of people who got hospitalized also spiked. If you take a look at what happened right here, it increased quite significantly. So just keep it, keep in mind, yes, California has opened, but we have to, you know, keep in mind that we cannot relax. We have to continue practicing social distancing because otherwise, you know, we might have to close to the state or the economy again. Now, we don't want that to happen because, take a look at what happened when it was closed. We had retail sales, which is a big part of the economy, bounce back and forth in March and April. Retail sales actually dropped significantly. First by five or six percent in March, or eight percent in March, and then another 14 or 15% in April. That's really, really significant. Now, that's a month-to-month percent change. So when the economy reopened, look at what happened. May bounced back pretty significantly, a very good sign. The economy is kind of climbing back a little bit. But if you take a look at how it compares to last year, we're still below last year's level. We're still down by 6%, 7% compared to last year in May. That's why we need to make sure that we are a little bit more cautious because if we don't, we have to, you know, keep the economy closed again. And it affects a lot of different industries. Retail sales, I'm using retail stores as an example, as a way to show, you know, how it affects the economy. Take a look at different categories. Now, if you look at restaurants, bar and restaurants, take a look at how it compares to the light blue bar compared to the dark blue bar. Obviously, it showed some decline compared to last year. While you take a look at auto parts and dealers, also dipped a little bit. Some other areas increased. Online retailers increased, like internet sales increased. Obviously, we're not going out as much. And of course, we save on gas. And, you know, people want to buy shoes, clothes. They actually are not buying it in the store. It dropped from 22.9 billion to 8.4. So we had a lot of retail sales drop. Now, retail sales made up a lot of the economic output in the economy. The economy for consumer spending, it made up about 2/3 of the entire GDP. So retail sales is a big part of it. And of course, that means a lot of people, because many of those people work in the service area and retail sales industries, a lot of people lost their job because of, you know, the shutdown. And even with a little bit of opening in the last few weeks, we haven't recovered, you know, all the jobs. In fact, you know, yes, we have been seeing some decline in jobs since it peaked in late March. Has been seeing some decline. But take a look at the last column, the last bar, which was the week ending last week. We still had about 1.5 million people file initial job claim. That's significant if you compare it to what happened before the shutdown. It was only about, you know, 1/6 of what we're seeing right now. So that's pretty significant.
Is this total? So is, you add all these numbers up, and that's how many people are currently unemployed? Or is this is just brand-new unemployed?
These are initial job claims. So these are brand-new. Now, if you look at the aggregate, some people who filed claims, let's say, you know, a few weeks ago, they may be, they may be able to find a job, you know, last week or two weeks ago. So the continuing claim, I'm glad that you asked, Gendo. The continuing claim is a number that we need to take a look at. You know, the continuing claim is, you know, the people who happened, continue to file, you know, unemployment benefits for at least two or three weeks or so. And you can see the last column. The last column shows that it's, we're at around 19 million. Now, just that number doesn't make, I mean, that makes any sense. If you take a look at, think about how many people are actually employed in the U.S. The labor market makes up about, has about 165 million, you know, people working in the U.S. 19 and 1/2 means we're maybe about 13%, 14% unemployment rate. You remember what happened at the beginning of the year? We had 3 and 1/2%.
Right.
So that was a significant change. California, show you California numbers. California, we also have initial claim dropping, but lately, it started leveling off, meaning we're still pretty significant compared to, you know, what we had before. Now, the beginning of March, 43,000 people were filed an employment claim. Right now, we are pretty significant, 287,000. We're about six times higher than, well, six or seven times higher than what we were at in March. And that number doesn't seem to go down. It seems like it's slowing, slowly going down, but not so much. How does that affect the market? Now, you know, with so many people out of jobs, of course, and the economy shut down, we experienced quite extensive decline in the last couple of months. Now, this is the May's number. May's data reflect, you know, what, what sales opened escrow in April, right? This entire month of April, we had the economy shut down for California. And of course, it started in March. So March, we actually had sales down by about 6% or 7%. And now, of course, it went down by 41% on a year-over-year basis. 2/3, 2/5 went down. It's pretty significant. How does, how did it affect prices? Surprisingly, it did affect price a little bit, but only by 4%. Now, Gendo, you've been, you know, through quite a few housing market cycle. The last one was only 10 years ago. And you probably remember, last time, price dropped more significantly, right?
Somewhat, just a tiny bit more, yes.
So if you take a look at, you know, the unsold inventory or the supply, it looks like, you know, we have, we continue to have tight supply. I remember last time, you know, 10, 15 years ago, when we had, 12 years ago, when we had the decline, unsold inventory or months of supply went up quite significantly. At one point, it was about 15, you know, 16 months of supply. So it did go down. It did go up significantly, but this time, it stays tight because people don't want to put their house on the market as well. Now, before we talk about supply, let's take a look at, you know, how it affects, how the historical trend compared to what we have. The last time we actually had a drop of 40-plus percent was in late 2007, like October 2007 or so. Market, financial market tank, you know, a lot of people lost their job as well. But this time around, and that time, you know, it lasted for quite a while. But the encouraging news is, if you take a look at what happened in pending sales. Last time, I don't think pending sales actually surged back that fast. When you look at pending, these represent pent-up demand. You look at pending sales, look at what happened after we dropped in May and March and April. In May, it actually surged on a month-to-month basis by 67%. After people figured out how to do a home sales transactions, maybe more people know how to do things virtually, and also, you know, the economy started opening a little bit, people started putting, keeping, putting their eyes on spying homes again. 67% increase in pending sales in May. That's pretty impressive. Now, that suggests to us that, you know, that we can expect a little bit more optimism in the upcoming months. I show you April and May numbers dropped. May number dropped 41%, which is pretty consistent with what we saw right here. These are pending sales number in a previous month. April, it dropped about 43%. So if May pending sales suggest a 5.5% drop, still a decline compared to last year, that suggests to me that, you know, in June, maybe in July, we'll see, well, we'll still see a decline from last year, but a much better decline. You know, if there's such thing as much better decline. So that looks a little bit more promising. If you look at individual price group, the dark blue line here suggested the luxury market seems to be searching a little bit more in the upcoming months or so. Let's talk about, let's talk about price a little bit. I said, you know, 3.7%. Indeed, that actually is a drop. And it was actually, believe it or not, that was actually the first decline since February 2012. We, we had a good run. We had a good run on a year-over-year basis. But the 3.7% is actually not too bad. And if you look at individual price group, you know, the 20th percentile probably represents sales from, with a price from 0 to 300, 350 or so. This is probably around, if 20 to 40, it's probably about 350 to 450 or so. So for those price point, we're seeing some softening in price. The lowest price point still continues to see...
Markets has a softening in price?
No, the lower, lower price point market actually increased slightly. But the higher price points, these sort of higher price points seem to have actually have a softer year-over-year growth rate. But, but this is only, you know, for the month of May. It looks like the month of June and July could be a little bit better. I don't have the number to show, but we looked at the listing price versus sale price. Listing price actually continued to stay at a pretty decent level. And we look at the pending sales price, it actually inched up, you know, about a percent or so. So that actually is a decent sign that, even though I'll, my prediction, if you, when you look at the end of the slide, slide deck later on, I predict that there will be some additional drop in price, in prices. But I think my predictions probably is a little bit more conservative. And the reason, and the reason that we have a decent price, only, only small drop in price, part of it is because of supply, but the other part of it is because of what Shay said, actually, what Shay said earlier. Mortgage rates. Mortgage rate dropped quite significantly compared to, you know, let's say, a year ago. I think last year at this time was about, 30-year fixed rate was somewhere around 3.8 or so. And 3.8 at that time was probably a pretty good number. But we did have 3%. You know, the latest Freddie Mac's number averaged 30-year fixed rate was 3.13. So what happened? When you combine a little bit of drop in price and a big drop in mortgage rates, take a look, take a look at what happened. Your mortgage payment, if you're buying the same house with the same typical house, you save 13% compared to last year.
Right. So houses are a lot more affordable now.
Lot more affordable. If, if you want to look at it in a dollar term, you pretty much save $300 a month.
Right.
That is about $4,000. Yeah. And of course, it is possible that, you know, rates could stay, will stay low and will probably even go lower. And part of the reason why prices actually didn't drop as much, as I mentioned, rates is a reason, but also, supply is another reason. So take a look at the active listings. You know, Gendo, you know, you know, buyers, we were just talking earlier. Buyers were, you know, competing with each other. Part of the reason is because there's no listing. People are still, many sellers might still be concerned about listing their properties, whether it be because they don't want people to get into their house or maybe they, well, some sellers actually might have to find a, they're also buyers. They have to find a house, buy their house first before selling their place. And everything kind of slowed down a little bit. If you take a look at active listing, take a look at what happened here. The latest month, active listings actually dropped 34%, quite significant. Let's quickly go over LA. LA number is, you know, a big part of the state. And if you look at LA's number, it also dropped significantly. Dropped about 47, 48% right here. Pretty significant. It's the biggest drop in October, since October 2007, price-wise. Even though it actually, price growth actually dipped a little bit, it continued to grow. Small percentage, only 1.4%. But hey, a growth, as a price growth is a price growth.
Right.
And it is because of inventory also. It inched up a little bit in terms of the months of supply, but don't be fooled by the month-to-supply ratio. It's really because sales dropped significantly, and supply may not have dropped as much. That's why we see an increase. Now, I'm going to go, quickly go over some of the weekly numbers. Because the number that I show you, there's a May number. I want to show you the most recent numbers, the number that I, you know, started collecting three months ago, but then we started collecting on a weekly basis. So the latest number is the, is last week's number. You can see, it's not a surprise. Closed sales actually continued to increase. Closed sales, remember, it was negotiated a month ago. And so it actually bottomed out right here in early May or so, started rising. So we can see, you know, June's number going to actually show a decent number. Pending sales is the one that you want to take a look at. Pending sales is the demand, the pent-up demand that we have been talking about. The pent-up demand, it's actually continued to stay at a high level, but it actually had its first dip, first weekly dip since early April. Well, I think part of the reason is, it's kind of leveling off because supply can remain a constraint. And you can see the supply constraint here. We improved compared to California, improved compared to, let's say, you know, the beginning of, the middle of March. But we're, look at what happened, started declining a little bit. I mean, normally, this time of the year, we should be closing in on the end of the buying season, right? We might actually stretch a little bit because we have a little bit of a delay because of the shutdown. So we may stretch a little bit longer into, let's say, July or so. Plus, you know, we have very, very good interest rates. But, you know, supply still remain a concern. When you have supply concern, that creates a little bit of upward pressure on prices. So for buyers or for people who are concerned about, okay, well, you know, we're going to wait until a little later before, when the price goes down, we'll jump into the market. I don't think that's going to happen. We might actually have a little bit of a decline in price, slight decline, but it might actually climb back up. If you look at California right here, we actually see the closed sales price per square foot continue to increase on a week-to-week basis. So I'm going to wrap it up in the next couple of slides. What's going to happen with the, with the economy?[1762.44] Well, of course, you need to look at the economy before you look at the market. The economy, again, based on a lot of economists' perspective, we already know the first quarter dropped five percent. Second quarter seems like, based on many economists' perspective, it's going to drop between thirty to forty percent. UCLA has the latest number, and they just released some number yesterday. They expect the second quarter to drop forty two percent compared to the first quarter. But third and fourth quarter will bounce back. We're going to see some bounce back, nice bounce back in the third quarter and the fourth quarter. Assuming that we're not going to see a second wave of coronavirus pandemic, we are going to see some bounce back. But even with the bounce back in the economy, we are probably going to see a negative number for the year. Meaning compared to twenty nineteen, it's going to be a down year, probably five to six or seven percent. As far as the market is concerned, let's look, look at sales and then look, let's look at price. Here's the monthly number, monthly compared to the previous year. Now, May number, this is the actual number, it dropped forty, forty one, forty two percent. Then I think, you know, the rest of the year, we're going to see some bounce back. Still decline from last year, but the decline from last year is only about ten percent. And June, maybe about twelve percent or so, uh, for the rest of the year or so. So when you look at the whole picture, because we missed, you know, two, three months of shutdown. We're going to, we're going to end the year with probably a decline of somewhere between thirteen to fourteen percent in terms of sales. Price wise, this is, you know, my conservative prediction. The projection for a price, yes, I think we're going to see a little bit of decline in the next few months or so. But because of the strong increase that we have for the, at the beginning of the year. We probably will end up having a small decline, maybe like two or three percent decline from the previous year. And then in twenty twenty one, we're going to bounce back. And again, this one is more conservative. It is very possible that this number will be a little bit more positive than, than, than you think. If you look at NAR number, the National Association of Realtors number, they actually predict that the, uh, price will actually be a slight increase of one percent. With that said, that wraps up, you know, my market outlook and, um, and feel free to ask me any question, Kendall.
Well, um, those of you on Instagram live, sorry, I'm messing around with this. I'm still trying to get a sense of what the best way to go is here. So, um, so last time we met, you were projecting pretty much a quote unquote recovery to our prices anyway, by March, April of next year, twenty twenty one, second quarter. Are you still feeling fairly optimistic that we'll be back to quote unquote normal at that point?
Well, normal is, it depends on how you define normal. Now, if you look at price, if you just look at price, now forget about the economy. You look at price, we are going to, right now, you know, we are slightly below six hundred thousand. Let's say if we're looking at six hundred thousand as sort of the benchmark of normal. I think April or May is, is the time that we probably will see it climbing back, climb back to about six hundred. Now, it could be even earlier than that. Before, because the last couple of months of the year of this year, I expected to, to decline maybe about five percent. But it may not even happen. You know, low rates at three percent or even below three percent probably will help, you know, push the price up a little bit.
And if I understand it correctly, we, the government is giving every indication that they're going to do whatever they need to to keep interest rates low like this.
Well, it's not just because the government, government wants to do it, because we have a global economic recession. Meaning, people know everywhere, it's going to be a little bit, it's going to be a little slow. The Federal Reserve of keeping interest rate loads, uh, uh, pretty much everyone knows that, you know, it's, we're going to be in a, uh, a slow growth for the next couple of years or so. So, um, people understand that interest rate is not going to go anywhere.
Right, okay. Wow, okay, that was really, uh, exa, uh, uh, authoritative. Do the survey here. Okay, there you go. Sorry about that, guys. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions, you can certainly drop them into the chat down below. I know I've got a couple of people who really know, uh, financial markets and that sort of thing. So if you've got an intelligent thing that, that should be asked, please, by all means, ask. Um, all right, so we're in a situation now where the market has not done what a lot of people expected or wanted. Wanted, because many buyers have hoped that with the economic carnage that has happened globally, that housing, housing prices would plummet down to the floor and they would finally be in a position to scoop up their house of their dreams for pennies on the dollar. And not only has that not happened yet, uh, it doesn't look like it's going to happen. Oscar, I know you're feeling that's not going to happen. Shay, you're not seeing that happening. I'm not seeing any indication. In fact, we had a house we put on the market last week on Thursday. Um, and showings were very difficult because the, my sellers were living in the house. I mean, we're going to go over kind of the protocols of what you need to do to see houses these days. But showings were really difficult and, um, you know, we were going through quite a lot to make it happen. And basically, we got fifteen offers in four days. And it sold for a ton of money over the asking price. So there's just a lot going on. Okay, so with that, let me get into my part of it. What I wanted to show you guys is that, first of all, you guys all know I do the coronavirus tracker. And I am tracking everything weekly, just like, um, Oscar is talking about at the state level. And I can kind of confirm everything he said, although it's probably a little bit less dramatic in our area. Our, in, our inventory is really low. I mean, it's really low. We're looking anywhere between twenty four and forty six percent below what we were this time last year. Our number of homes that are going into escrow has risen dramatically in almost all of my markets. Except weirdly, northeast Los Angeles has not been performing that well, but that's just been a couple of weeks. Normally northeast Los Angeles performs really, really well. My other weak spot, which was kind of weird, is Pasadena. Glendale, uh, last month was kind of lagging against other, uh, cities. And this month, Glendale is the shining city in my performance. Our pending contracts are up, our prices are up, our days on market are down, and our inventory is looking pretty good. So there is a lot that's going in our area. And if you are somebody who's looking to buy or sell now, I highly recommend that you get onto my coronavirus tracker, the link that you get is a live link. So you can see the changes I've made as I make them and I update them. My goal is to update them on Saturday, but I was thinking, Saturday's the day I'm supposed to take off. But in any case, I tried to update that on Saturday so that you can see that week's number and how it compares both to what we were doing last year, this week, and also how we compare to the last few weeks. And I've even added some handy dandy pretty charts. Okay, they're not that pretty, because I'm not really good at charts, but they're not like Oscar's. But to be fair, Oscar has an entire graphics department behind him and I just have a low make, so. Um, so that's kind of what's going on in the, um, basic update in our local area. What I really wanted to do is walk those of you who are thinking about buying or selling to the logistics of what's going on. Yes, hi Tracy, Tracy's saying our poor buyer is up against multiple offers in Pasadena as well. This is true, but still, your metrics are lagging behind Glendale's, na 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 na. Sorry, I, I just did that, I know, we did, Tracy understands me. What I wanted to do was kind of walk you through the logistics, because we are in a coronavirus world and everything has changed. Now, the biggest change, which I think everybody should know, but I'm beginning to realize, not everybody does. The biggest change is we do not do physical open houses. And what I mean by that is we are not setting aside a time, two hours, one hour, three hours, doesn't matter. We're not setting aside a time, we're inviting every Tom, Dick, Harry and Mary to come into the house, all willy nilly, to look around, either because they want to buy it or because they're bored on a Sunday afternoon, saw the sign and wanted to come through. We're not doing that. Why are we not doing that? We're not punishing you. We are not trying to make your life difficult. We are trying to protect you from catching the coronavirus. We do not want to be the instigators of bringing a bunch of people, strangers, into a space where you may be exposed wittingly or unwittingly to droplets that carry the, carry the coronavirus. We also need to protect our homeowners. The one that I had last week was occupied and you know what? It's their house, they live there. So they have every expectation of keeping themselves and their family safe from the coronavirus. So physical open houses aren't happening. And guess what? That also includes broker open. If I could have given a nickel for every broker that wanted to know, when am I going to have it open on broker open? I was, I was just astonished at the lack of awareness of what we cannot do anymore. Real estate agents and, and, and the public, the public is excused, real estate agents, you're not excused. I don't know why you're being so dumb. Yes, I said that. Sorry, not sorry. Okay, so here's what, Judy's laughing at me, she's usually laughing at me. Here's what we need to do if you want to see a home. First and foremost, seeing homes as a pastime is no longer an option. Can't do it. If that's what you like to do on a Sunday afternoon, check out design ideas, see what your, what your neighbor is doing. That is no longer something that we can do. So what is happening now is that we are needing to find out, and I'm going to share my screen here real quick. So I had a few things that I wanted to share. Okay, so, um, what needs to happen when you are seeing a house is that you need to follow the instructions. So this is, let me see if I can get this much bigger. Sorry, guys. Take that and make that hundred percent. All right, so these are some of the things, this is posted actually in the window of any house that you want to see. You need to be aware of some basic safety procedures. You need to read the disclosures, which I actually have a copy of it that you can kind of look at, but it's just a lot of legalese. And it pretty much tells you that if you have any symptoms, don't go. If you've been around people that have exhibited symptoms, you can't go in the house. You understand that you're stating you don't have a temperature, you don't have a cough, you don't feel fatigue. You've got to state all of those. You're also signing a disclosure that says you're aware that coronavirus is really bad stuff. And you're aware this really bad stuff, and you don't want to catch the bad stuff, you don't want to give the bad stuff to other people. I'm greatly simplifying, simplifying what this two-page document of legalese is, but you have to sign the P. I'm not being mean, I'm not making you do this, this is the law, people, it's got to happen. You've got to wash your hands. When you go to see a house, um, a house should have a hand washing station available for you. You can wear gloves, but a lot of the medical people, they don't like gloves because it gives you this false feeling of security that you're protected, okay? But washing your hands is the best way to protect you, yours and anybody who comes in the house afterwards. So hand washing station, we also have a hand sanitizer available for anybody that comes into our listings at digs. But that, be that as it may, you still want to touch as little as possible. Some of the most aware people that came into my listing last week, they said, I'm putting my hands in my pocket. I said, great idea. But if you do touch anything, just let me know and I'll sanitize after you, right? Obviously, well, I think it's obvious, wear a mask. And I don't care if you don't like a mask, and I don't care if you think you shouldn't be told to wear a mask. You're going to go see a house, wear a mask, period, end of discussion, don't even talk to me about it. So symptom-free, touch as little possible, wear a mask, and practice social distancing. So we have guidelines given to us by the California Association of Realtors that says that we should have, I think it's the agent and the two other people. That one was actually a challenge, uh, with my listing in La Crescenta. And I have to say, I was fairly lenient as long as people were staying six feet apart. But try to stay six feet apart from your real estate agent. You know, if you're a man and wife, you're living in, in the same house and you're sharing the same bed, well, then of course, you're probably going to want to be closer than six, six feet, and that's okay, but you should be at least six feet away from your agent. Don't make your agent breathe your droplets, even though you think you haven't got the, the virus. Just, just, you know, be cool, stay six feet apart. The homeowner should be gone from the house. There should not be a homeowner. In my case, because someone was living in there, I was, the listing agent, I was in the house in a corner, staying far, far away from people as they went through the house. So that's what it looks like when you're doing that. And we love our sanitizing spray, because we know, you know what, as much as you don't want to touch your face or the doorknob, you probably will. So that is, that is something that has to happen. Before you can go to the house, it used to be that you, well, actually, before I do this, let me just do one more thing. I just want to show you, this is a copy of our coronavirus, um, entry advisory and declaration. And so really, really smart, smart lawyers, actually, I think there's an army of them. An entire army of super smart lawyers got together and they eked out every single word on this thing. And it's designed to make sure that not only are you informed about coronavirus, but also that everybody involved is protected as much as we can from liability, from inadvertent, not knowing what they need to do. So this is a form that you will have to sign every day for the houses that you see. So the fact that you signed one today is not good for seeing homes tomorrow. Um, and at, at digs, we're actually getting an advisory for each and every single house. So if you're going to see five houses, we're going to make you sign five P A Ds. And that's just the way it is, we're all going to do it, you know, it's all going to be, um, via DocuSign, so it'll be pretty easy to do, but yeah, we're going to make everybody do it. So, um, let's see, that's what's going on there with the showings. Now, the other thing that has changed is it used to be that you could call up your agent because you saw something on, you know, internet portal of choice, or you got an email that said, new listing that came on the market. It used to be you could just call up your agent and say, I want to go see that. And some of you have an expectation of being able to see it, you know, right away, over an hour's notice, or at least that day. And that is not necessarily the case anymore. You've got to plan before you go, because many times, people are still living in the house. They've got to get everybody out, their animals or children themselves. You've got to get the P E A D form signed, and you got to get that over to the listing agent. And the listing agent, oftentimes, they have this special code on the lockbox that your agent will not be, be able to open it until the listing agent had received your paperwork, reviewed it. And then when everything has been checked and cross-checked, then they'll give you that special code. No, so just the fact that your agent has an MLS key, not enough. You have to go and follow all of the recommendations. Then you got to make sure you got your mask, sign the P, and all of that before you can go in. And no, you can no longer bring your mom, your dad, your great uncle Joe, who's your trusted advisor, even though he only sold, the last time he bought a house was in nineteen forty two, you cannot have Uncle Joe come. It is not going to be this showing party. It's going to be you, your spouse, really would prefer that you don't have your kids. Find a babysitter, give them to the neighbors, take them to Uncle Joe, whatever you need to do. Just you, your spouse, your agent, and anybody else that you need to see that house, FaceTime them as you're going through. Okay, we can do a lot on Facebook, in, uh, FaceTime and Zoom. You do not need to bring all of your trusted advisors physically to the house. Another thing, don't expect to see the house and then see the house and then see the house and then see it one more time before you make a decision. You'll probably only get one shot to see the house. I know that sounds harsh, and you're thinking, you're expecting me to buy a million dollar house, seeing it just once? And I'm saying, yes, that's what I expect. Unless it's a vacant house, vacant houses is a little bit easier. But if it's occupied by a home, by a homeowner, we just have to be really careful, that's just the way it is. It's, 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 it's our duty to our community. So see it once, see it really carefully. And then most, almost everybody these days are getting the homes scanned via three D Matterport. I've been doing it on every listing I've ever had since six months after Matterport was released. So this is something we do as standard at digs, but most real estate agents are doing that. See it physically once and then use the three D Matterport to remind yourself, oh, how does this room relate to that room? What is the floor plan, what is the flow? Okay, so these are, these are the changes- Okay, so these are, these are the changes that we need to go through in order to see a house. Now, one last thing before we go. For the homeowners out there, you may be afraid to put your house on the market because you just don't want strangers coming into your home. It's not practical to expect someone to buy your home, pay three-quarters of a million, a million, two million dollars, and not be able to see your home physically. However, we, there is a lot that we can do that can greatly mitigate your exposure to possible coronavirus. We can make sure that there is enough time, we can sanitize, there's always the masks. We can open up all the windows and doors in your house during the showing because the fresh air apparently is a real contributor to keeping exposure down. So there are a lot of things that we can do. If you're afraid to put your house on the market right now because you're afraid to have strangers in your home, we should talk. We can put together a strategy plan that can reduce your risk. I can't completely take it away, but nobody can. You're, you're at risk just being out and about, living your life. The only way you can be sure that you're at no risk is to never go out your front door and not let anybody in your front door. So we can greatly reduce it. And if you want to talk about how you do that, to craft a plan on how to do that, please let me know. I'd be delighted to craft a plan that gives you as much peace of mind and comfort as I can. So that's pretty much what I had to share here on our town hall. If you have any questions, I hope you know that you could have posted that on Instagram Live, on Facebook. If you're seeing this as a recording, because this will be playing out as a recording, feel free to either ping me on Facebook, on Instagram, you can send me an email. You can send up a smoke signal, I'll probably see it and be able to answer your questions. So it looks like we've got everything handled. If there are no other questions, I just want to thank Oscar and Shay for yet again contributing to my town hall meeting and giving people information that they really need. I'm Kendall Young with Diggs, it's been a pleasure. Until next month, see you guys later, thanks, bye.